Tuesday, September the fifth, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. Our prayer will be by Reverend Billy Booth, and our pledge of allegiance will be by Councilman College. Please stand.
I pray, oh God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings of God that you bestowed upon us. We pray for your guidance and your strength and your peace. God, we pray for those who've been in the wake of a storm. We ask for your strength and your presence in their presence. We give you glory, we give you honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend Booth and Councilman College. Before we start, I'd like to say let's just have a moment of silence for all of our loved ones who passed away the past couple of weeks. We've lost a lot of community pillars here in our community. Mr. Tucey, Mr. Gallott, and the youth in our sister city pray for their family. It's never good losing a child or a grandchild or a brother or sister. So let's just have a moment of silence for all the people that we've lost this last couple of weeks. That brings us to our agenda approval. Ms. Yancey, do we have any additions or changes? Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Councilman Gallott. We have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Yancey.
The Gochee Farmers Market will be held the second Saturday of September, this Saturday, starting at 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM at George Martin City Park. This is our last farmers market of the year. Tasty Thursday will be September 28th, starting at 11:00 AM at the former senior Grimald Park.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. That brings us to our business. Also, I would like to say during our announcements, after forty years of nothing but good times here in the city of Gochee, Mr. Bill and Ms. Pat Desher are retiring tomorrow. They are having a retirement reception from 5:30 to 7:30 at their first location they opened when they came to Mississippi, which is the Gochee McDonald's. So their children would continue to run the Desher organization, but they are retiring. They have come back to Gochee, Mississippi, to live for their retirement. So we're blessed to have them and their commitment, and they have been committed to the city of Gochee, Jackson County, and coastal Mississippi for many, many years. They did excellence of explosion. They gave top scholarships to children, helped raise money for children to go to MGCCC, and their list goes on. They are real heroes when it comes to supporting children and their employees. So if you see them out and about, just thank them for their continued support to the city of Gochee. That brings us to our -- we don't have a presentation agenda. That brings us to our business agenda. Business agenda item number one is to conduct a public hearing regarding the municipal budget for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 by our city manager, Ms. Yancey. Should I cut the light or no?
Can you say it if we don't cut the lights off?
Everybody see?
This is the budget presentation for our upcoming 2024 budget, and this is the required budget hearing. Our budget calendar. We had a work session on August the 17th. Tonight is our public hearing, and we will adopt the budget on September 12th, as required by law to adopt it before September 15th of each year. General fund. Our current millage rate for last fiscal year is 43 mils. Of that, our 33.89 is general fund millage. It includes 2.80 mils dedicated to public safety. Debt service is 8.11, and the library is 1 mil. For FY 2024, there is no millage increase proposed for this fiscal year. The general millage will be 31.09, general public safety 2.80, debt service 8.11, and library 1 mil. In 2023, the value of a mill to the city of Gochee was $123,918. This upcoming fiscal year, the mill is going to be valued at $125,202. So you see an increase of per-mill difference between that amount. Our projected revenues are $12,478,213. Our proposed budget expenditures are $14,097,073. So our budget has focused on the following things. Foundations required to spur economic development; improvements to make Gochee competitive in the development and workforce marketplace; improvement of the quality of life for Gochee citizens through improved city services and expanded recreation activities; continuation and expansion of events that showcase the city as a vibrant community, bringing in non-residential visitors; promotion of the city in order to increase sales tax revenue; and address understaffing and personnel retention as a professional and dedicated workforce is imperative to setting the foundation required to further appeal to developers. General fund expenditures for this upcoming budget. And you can see from the pie how much of the budget is going to what category. So 55.56% of the FY 2024 budget is going to public safety, police, and fire. 14.44% is going to the administrative departments. 7.05% is going to debt service. 8.97% is going to general expenses. 8.24% goes to general maintenance, and 5.74% goes to recreation. This is the current coastal millage rate. Gochee is still second to lowest. You can see Moss Point has 56.21 mils. Passat Village has 54.50 mils. We are at 43 mils, and Ocean Springs is at 28.92 mils. So things that are included in this 2024 budget is continued funding of step plan increase for the police department and fire department; a new server for the police department; necessary equipment for the fire department, including radio and computer equipment; engineering for ARCA projects; replacement of streetlight bulbs; Polaris and barricades for the recreation department; evasions; increases in fuel and utilities; computer upgrades; forklift and trailer and street skating maintenance. In the utility fund, which is an enterprise fund, which is separate from the general fund, the minimum bill for residential customers excluding garbage, based on 3,000 gallons, will increase to $63.45. The increase per 1,000 gallons will be $3.65. The minimum bill for commercial customers excluding garbage, based on 3,000 gallons, will increase to $72.75 and increase per 1,000 gallons of $4.35. So before I go through this, we had a rate study done in 2018. And by law, we are required to collect sufficient revenue that will pay for any water and sewer services that come out of that enterprise fund. So we had another rate study done this year. The rates proposed are lower than the professionals recommended that we implement. So you see underwater, your minimum 3,000 gallons, you're currently paying $24.75. Under the 2024 budget, it will go to $27.30. Per additional 1,000 gallons is currently $8.25. It will go to $9.10. Sewer, now this is collection only. The minimum bill is currently $12.30. The minimum bill will be next year $16.05. Per additional 1,000 gallons is currently $4.10. Per additional 1,000 gallons will be $5.35. Wastewater, that's JCUA. So once we collect everybody's sewer, we send it to JCUA to be treated. They charge us for that. So when you see wastewater, that's what we're paying another entity, JCUA. The minimum currently is $15.45. The minimum is going to $20.10. And if you've been here for budget presentations before for the last several years, I always have a slide that talks about how JCUA has gone up since during, from 2018 to 23, just for the city of Gochee, a million dollars that we have not passed on to the residents. So we have to recruit sufficient funds to pay JCUA. Minimum water and sewer bill will be 52, is currently 52.50. Your minimum bill will go to $63.45. So if you include garbage, your minimum bill right now is 73.50. Your minimum bill excluding garbage will go to 84.45. Commercial utility rates. You see the same businesses. You see the same increase across the board. Businesses pay a little more than residential, so that's why the rates are different. So their minimum bill will be 80.70. Is 80.70 right now, the minimum bill will go to 93.75, including garbage. Capacity charge, this is also commercials for commercial entities. So back in 2018, we implemented this capacity charge because 30% of the customers, commercial customers, were using most of the water. So the rate study tried to equally distribute the cost of the system via this capacity charge. So you can see currently in the first column right here what they're paying now. And you can see the proposed for 2024 and the increases in the last column. So for example, if they're using 10,000 to 19,999 gallons, their current capacity charge is $50. It will increase to 75. If your bigger users use over 250,000 gallons, that's $1,500 currently capacity charge will go to 16.50. So that's the end of the budget presentation synopsis. Does anybody have any questions?
If you'll come to the podium and state your first and last name.
Do I want more? I need to know, maybe I didn't understand. We're paying so much for the police department, but only like 5% for recreation. Did I hear that correctly? I explained it to my, we need something for the children.
Hold on, let me see, and then I'll take that. Right here. This is what you're talking about. Okay, so what this is, is this is the percentage of the expenditures where, of the whole budget where it goes. You get a lot of your, we get a lot of our recreation, things to create things for the kids, to build parks, that sort of thing. We get a tremendous amount of that through legislative funding. For example, Town Commons Park, we've got a $1.2 million playground going in over there that's called an inclusion playground. I didn't even know what that was at first, but it's where all kids, whether they have disabilities or on the spectrum or not on the spectrum, can play together, and it will be accessible to all the kids, and that sort of thing. So the reason that it may look a little out of whack to you is because we get a lot of our funding for recreational opportunities through legislative funding, grant funding, cartwheels, and things like that. Anybody else?
Another question. What's going on with Martin Bluff Road?
Well, that's not. I'm sorry, I understand, I understand. All right, say it. Anybody else? Thank you.
We're going to address that.
Yeah, Moore, that'd have to be there in your citizen comments section. Like our normal meetings. This is just a public hearing regarding the budget. Okay, Ms. Yancey, we thank you and the city clerk comptroller and all the directors for y'all's hard work in working on this to not raise taxes for our citizens. And we know it's tight. It's not a budget like a lot of larger cities that, and older cities. But y'all have done a great job to be able to provide the services that the citizens have been receiving without a tax increase. And we know it was hard, and y'all did a great job. That brings us to business agenda item number two, adoption of a resolution fixing the municipal tax levy for FY 2023 to 2024 by our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery.
There are no changes, and we have to approve it annually regardless of whether we change it or not, so that we can submit it to the state county.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery.
It has been done when I have a hearing.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on the tax levy on business agenda item number three? Two on me, no. Do we have a motion by council to set the resolution approving the city of Gochee, Jackson County, fixing the municipal avalanche tax levy for the year October 1, 2023 to September 30 of 2024? So moved. We have a motion by Councilman College. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
Just copy what you say. Good job. Thank y'all for the hard work year after year.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gallott?
I sure wish we could just be lower than Ocean Springs.
Look at the value of a mill.
There you go.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, approval of change order number two and certificate of substantial completion for the Gochee Bencliff Road wastewater system upgrades at Go Mesa Project by Kim Soshe, manager of grants and projects.
Change order number two is for some shrubbery to replace some trucks that are damaged at Highway 98 and Robertson Road. Right, and they were moved for some erosion control blankets and for some emergency videoing and cleaning out of a blockage that was found. And this also is the certificate.
Thank you, Ms. Soshe. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council? So moved. We have a motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
I have no comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gallott?
Is this final payment?
No substantial completion, because it's a change order.
Well, in this attachments you got here, this thing was scheduled to be completed August the 5th of 2023. Has there been a change in the schedule?
There was. The first change order extended the contract time.
Change order number one, right here, says it went from May 17th to August 5th. So what is it now? Somebody got a completion date on this project?
We asked if there was a new deadline.
August 2nd.
I can't hear y'all.
August 2nd is the substantial completion on the.
This says August the 5th, 2023. I'll read up.
But is this substantial completion certificate? It has a August 2nd. So they finished it by the, they are substantially complete by, before the substantial completion date.
No, but is the project finished? No, right? So when is it going to be completed?
It's substantially completed, so they've met all the terms of the contract. They have a few of the things cleaned up. They have a punch list.
So we're working on a punch list to complete the project?
Yes.
You got any idea when it'll be finished?
Let's see.
Pick one day.
Normally, they have ninety days to complete substantial completion from the punch list. Most of this last month's been landscaping and watering.
The contractors will have thirty calendar days to complete the punch list items, September 1, 2023.
Thirty more days is what you're saying, right?
That's what it is, yeah.
Okay. So we ride down the road, and all the shrubbery's going to be in, and everything's going to be cleaned in, and that's over thirty days. If we don't get any horrendous rains. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Councilman Gallott?
Nope, that's it.
Councilman College?
Just want to verification, reading through this, that we are expecting a summary change order at the end that actually may deduct the overall cost of that contract, correct? Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, I want to give a big kudos to JLB Contracting for the efficient work and completion project in a timely manner. And the nice landscaping, all the completion that they're doing. And watering the grass and, you know, to keep it from dying like it's been dying, because we went through a, still going through it, pretty much.
That's right. Then we're on our waters, go.
So kudos to them for, I'd like, I wish the Martin Bluff Road could have been finished in this time of year. And I also like to thank Mark Seymour for being on the job and overseeing the project throughout the duration of the job. That's all I got.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
My, I did have a quick, when they do plant, but they have been like doing, being diligent about watering the grass and all that, so they're going to continue to be diligent and water the y'all ponds so that we don't end up within a few months of having dead shrubs, correct?
If they die, we'll have to. If they don't keep them happy and healthy.
I just want to make sure we can hold on to making sure they, okay. That's all I have. And I do want to thank the contractor and the engineering for being on the spot when they've had complaints from residents and/or business owners and for communicating with the business owner to go back and repair any damage that was done at that business. So the business owners were very appreciative of the fast response from the city staff to the engineering, to the contractors. So thank all of you. We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman College. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four, authorization to enter professional services agreement with Seymour Engineering for work associated with the Hickory Hill Water Quality and Stormwater Improvements Project, and the amount not to see, not to exceed $453,350 by Ms. Kim Soshe.
This is our Go Mesa 2023 award, and y'all proved that in my last meeting, and this is to get the engineers started.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council? Is it regarding this agenda item, Ms. Moore?
It is, it is.
Okay. And state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Do I want to hear? I just, I want to explain to me, how is you can pay so much money for a study, but yet Martin Bluff Road is a mess?
This is a different project, Ms. Moore.
Certain projects take precedent over certain projects.
That's its own project with its own funding. This is a different project with different funding, different engineer, and different contractor. They all are, they're all important projects.
And the contractor is Seymour?
Engineer on this project.
They just don't do a study, so much money for a study?
This isn't just a study.
What is it? For design?
For designing it. And that's what it's comparable. Every city has to have this to be able to get your funding. You have to, it's one of the grant agreements instead you have to fund, provide. Any other comments? Do we have a motion from council? So moved. Motion by Councilman Gallott. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Alvin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gallott?
Just to be clear, what the engineering, Seymour engineering will.
I can't hear you, sir.
Just to be clear, for what Seymour engineering will provide under this contract is services including topographic surveys, engineering design, development of a bidding package, construction and administration when the project is going on, and they will have a resident project engineer on site during the process of the contract. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Gallott, Councilman College?
And just to follow up on that. You know, when the city goes out, we come with these different projects, and we apply for grants. And the grants are specific for that project. So this Go Mesa right here was an engineered project to improve the drainage in an area of city of Gochee. Seymour Engineering actually did this pro bono at that point right up there to go ahead and assist the city manager with procuring these funds. These funds cannot be shifted from one project to another. They are strictly allocated to that project. So this engineer will do the complete design package and construction package, and will go out and hire an engineer. And then hire a contractor. We'll go put out a bid and award the contract to a contractor to go ahead and do the improvements. And that's all funded through this Go Mesa project that we've got. And unfortunately, like I said, you can't shift from one project to another. Those projects are funded strictly for that project and no other project. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman Gallott, a second by Councilman Alvin. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five, approval of change order number one, summary and pay application number two for the sanitary sewer mains rehabilitation project, College Park, Gallottville Road, and Valley Wood subdivisions by Ms. Kim Soshe.
Change order number one is an increase. Some barriers were added to the project, and some were shifted around a little bit. So like the other project, this is an increase, but there are other decreases in the project that were listed on the second page.
Thank you, Ms. Soshe. That brings us to, any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion by council to approve change order number one, summary pay application number two, the sanitary sewer mains rehabilitation project, College Park, Gallottville Road, and Valley Wood subdivisions? So moved. Motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Gallott. All in favor? Any discussion, starting with George?
No comment.
Jackson?
No comment.
Gallott?
No.
College?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Alvin?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. Brings us to business agenda item number six, approval of the Dochee claims. Our city clerk and comptroller's already provided them. They're online to the public. They've been sent to the council in our packages. So that is the presentation. Do we have any public comments on the approval of Dochee claims? No? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion to approve the Dochee claims provided that all entries are on a true, correct, properly entered and not fraudulent. Make a motion to approve the docket of claims provided that all entries are on a true, correct, properly entered and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, uh, um, any discussion? George?
No.
Jackson?
No comment.
Gilat?
No comment.
College?
No.
Anderson?
No comment.
Alvin?
No comment.
Motion, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business consent agenda, we approve them in one motion unless somebody wants to remove one. Any council members want to remove one? They are. Number one, approval of minutes from recess council meeting held August the 15th, 2023, and the budget work session held August 17th, 2023. Two, resolution approval of paddle for Paul's poker float sponsorship from Friends of the Jackson County Animals. Three, authorization to accept monetary donations for the City of Goche's cruising through the decades event. Four, approval of a non-exclusive facility use agreement with Gulf Coast Vipers Organization for Buddy Davis Park. Five, receive July 2023 finance reports. Six, approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Mississippi Attorney General's Office, Internet Crimes Against Children, ICAC Task Force. Seven, authorization to remove vehicles from the City of Goche's inventory. Eight, approval of water and sewer adjustments for September 2023 and the amount of $3,516.80. Do we have a motion by council?
So move.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Gilat, all in favor? Motion carries. Anybody that wanted to speak during public comments, citizen comments, did you sign in at the sign in sheet in the back? If you did not, raise your hand now. Y'all already signed. Okay, that brings us to our study agenda, discuss citizen comments. Number, you have three minutes, come to the podium here, state your first and last name and your address, you have three minutes. When you get to, one minute left, Councilman College will hold up this number one. When he does, you got one minute, when you're, if you're not done in one minute, I'll say your time's up, he will notify me, Councilman College will, your time's up. If you continue to talk, we'll tell you to please stop, and if you continue, then our lovely, nice officers who are here to make sure we all stay orderly this evening will ask you to politely to leave the chambers. Citizen, first citizen would be Mr. Larry Childers.
Uh, yes, my name is Larry Childers, and I just recently bought property in Westgate, Berkeley. This was back in December, I closed, but I had a problem with our water. It was terrible. Drinking water, everything, the ice maker was making, just doesn't but chocolate ice was that bad. So I put in a, I put in a work order, went to the city, or went through the water company, put in a work order to have them to flush, and that's why I asked to flush the hydrants. So it went on all that time, and I would call and remind them, and they said, well, we've lost the order, we're not seeing anything even in the computer. So I would, done it again. So it was the same thing, went on and went on, and then they had something on last week, uh, fire department was involved, but I have a hydrant right across from my home. And they come and flush that thing for a good six hours, and it's salt and pepper. So all that time, I was, as a citizen, I was paying for my own water because I wouldn't say drink, it couldn't be, it was that bad. And for my coffee, got him a green coffee, so, well, I didn't trust water, so we had been paying for a lot of water for drinking needs all that time. Then mysteriously got fixed by just draining that one hydrant. So as a new citizen here, uh, you know, I hope to be a part of Goche. I wanna be a good neighbor to everybody, and anything that I could possibly do to help, help anybody in Goche or neighbors or boss, but I would like to be in the role in the city in some way, shape or form. Or maybe, you know, I have something that's gonna work, some of it won't work. That's, that's the problem now. I just wish that they could do something to get things right.
Thank you, Mr. Childers, and they will, um, the city manager will get with the public works director, Ms. Ramona Morgan, who's sitting right back here. Lovely lady, she's raising her hand for you to see her, um, and they will get with our ser, public work service provider to make sure those lines are flushed regularly for your water cleared. And we apologize that it took long to get it done, but glad it's finally done forty. Your work. Thank you. Mr. Monroe Cornet?
Hey, I'm Monroe Cornet, I live 2921 Pike Cove. My biggest problem is with, again, sir?
Same street again?
2921 Pike Cove.
Pike Cove?
The former mayor's home. The house next door to me for the former, I don't recall. That woman's name, what, Mary?
Yes, Ms. Mayor Ford.
Now, I say nothing. Why does it take Clearwater Solutions so long to respond to anything? That's my biggest problem, I have a work order to get Ross Dick cleaned up since August last year. And I have a sewer order in for them to come and look at, the city's sore by it, because I didn't correct anything on my side, but they're still back, but they have still yet to show up. Now, another question, why don't the city maintain their property? I have between myself, 2921 and 2113, a forty foot wide, fifty foot deep, and then sixty feet wide on the bottom side next to the trees, that belongs to the city, they have never touched it. And that's where that ditch that I put the work order in for is at, they've never touched it. Myself and the neighbors cut that grass. And I know there's an issue because they have total second land, but it never transpired. So I have a twenty foot easement on my property to the road, and so it'll be twelve, that's what they've, understood correctly. So, and why don't the city come maintain their property? But you, I know there's a drainage right there, but you're talking forty, sixty feet. That's not easement, that's well over the easement thing, so they don't do that. And that's about all the things. And the mayor took a picture of my little map I, uh, that I did today, and that's a pretty good sized piece of land. According to, uh, Zillow, it valued at $193,000. Yes. What, forty foot wide on the top, sixty on the bottom, and fifty deep?
$193,000 perhaps?
Thank you, Mr. Cornet, and the city manager or the public's work director, Ms. Morgan, will be getting with you.
Okay, thank you.
And I will follow up, and Councilman Gilat and Councilman College. That brings you us to, out, I really can't, it's. Springwood Road. Maybe Kelly, Alice, Ally, maybe Relay, it's something M. Relay.
That's me.
Okay.
Willie Riley, right?
Maybe, yes, Willie Riley, now, I just couldn't read the print, I'm sorry, if, Willie Riley?
Yes.
You're next for comments.
Do you wanna come up front?
Yes, now to the podium and state your name and address, unless you can't, you just wanna, we can try to see if we can hear you from back there, but I don't know if you're not able to get to the front.
Well, this is kinda loud since I've been to the maintenance.
Yes, ma'am.
I used to come pretty often, but, uh.
Can you name your, state your name and address, ma'am?
Oh, Lily M. Riley, two zero one nine, Springwood Road, Goche. So, um, I've been here since, uh, seventy-five. And, uh, when I first came to Goche, it was really nice, uh, we had restaurants and, you know, we had a mall and everything. But now we don't have anything. No place to really go around here, or, you know, I know, uh, you all are still in the amplifier, but nothing has, uh, been, um, nothing has gone on in the mall area, so, uh, we need something around here, you know? Nice restaurants and stuff like that too.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Riley.
Okay.
That brings us to Ms. Dela Moore.
I have something I just.
Just take your first and last name and your address, Ms. Moore, you know the protocol?
Yes, twenty west gate, Broadway, Goche. Okay, um, I wanna talk to Anderson about, uh, computer fraud, computer fraud and fraud analysis. Ask, prohibit intentionally accessing computers without authorization or in a state school organization. Hacking into a personal computer or inner device within your house is a computer crime and one against the privacy of the individual through the breach of emails, files, social media and other related material. Furthermore, spreading false and defamatory information is defamation and may also be an invasion of privacy. Victim for fake accounts that spread false and defamatory, defamatory information have the option to, option to sue and seek discovery. To sue and seek discovery and to who created the account and possible even recovery damage. In Mississippi, it is a felony to use computer, internet or electronic means to attempt to obtain the personal information, identity information of another. So really, my question to Councilman Anderson is, you say you was hacked, why haven't you filed a police report? It is a crime. Filing a police report would not only help you learn the creator of the post, but if I file a police report, it would help provide proof to us if you have been hacked or not. Also, filing a police report is a crime, so it's a crime someone hacked your computer, you could sue them, okay, you could sue them. File a report, my advice is to file a report to prove that you was hacked, because you have not done that yet.
Ms. Bobby, is it Bobby, do Miss Burns, Burrows, I'm sorry. We're gonna have to add some spaces between these signatures.
Print your name.
I wrote print.
I was gonna take it off, but I decided.
Oh, that's why, I was like, man, this is a lot of lines, okay, state your first.
Uh, address, 2416 Academy Drive, and what I wanted to talk about is, uh, the road closed on Old Spanish Trail, and it's been closed for about a month and a half, and I hadn't seen anyone working on the road, and I have a business over two daycare. We have to go around, and we have to cross over nine, that's dangerous for us. So I don't see anyone working on it, and I wanna know what's going on, because we have to, the buses are, have to, they have to go the other way around as well. So it's causing a lot of trouble for us.
Well, that is, we are blessed that the county, you know, due to the sensitivity and the nature and the dangers of that area and why we needed that project, we were blessed that the county board of supervisors assisted our request and they are handling the project. So we, um, our public works director, Ms. Morgan, if she don't have an update for us, her and the chancey, then they can get one from the board of supervisors, then we can provide it or do an update on our social media for you.
Yes, but I'd just like to see somebody actually working on it.
Well, they actually were out there working on the holiday on it, I was out there and they were working. So I guess they're working when they have their material, but I have been seeing them work, maybe just not all day.
Right, I just go through there seven, eight times a day.
Yeah.
And each time I go, I don't see anyone there, so that's my concern.
They actually were working in that little rain we did have the other day, and I was shocked that they were working in the rain, but they were working. Ms. Morgan, do you have a update or not?
I don't, I'll, I'll know tomorrow.
Wait, and we'll follow back up with you after the meeting, will you come fill in the blanks that you didn't fill in so they can contact, we can contact you? Okay. Mr. Charles Moore? Mr. Moore, it's a good thing I can read your signature.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'm gonna say, uh.
Address, name and address.
Nineteen twenty west gate, Broadway, Goche. All I gotta say is, uh, you know, we're still trying to get rest of them to resign, and that's what I'm here today for. Hey, you know, he says it's, it's Facebook was hacked, so he hasn't proven. So by calling us out our name is bad, that's a bad situation there. But to me, I think he should resign, but that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Greg?
Canada.
Canada.
Yes, I'll write it with my other hand.
Oh.
You may look kinda funny.
Well, I thought it was an R, and I hope your arm gets to fill in best as.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Greg Canada, fourteen fifty-three, Route D, ten and Tully. Uh, I come, a couple of things that I heard tonight, I'd like to share with you, but first of all, I haven't been there for a while, so I don't know what's going on with the Martin Bluff. I heard a few things that, you know, uh, we know it does no work getting done right now. How is that project coming? And I, I, I don't, I'm not really worried, concerned about how do we get in this mess, because I don't know if that's gonna do us any good. But I would like to know how can we get out of this mess? And it's, it's been tough, man, I mean, for all of us to have to, to look at that, that, that road that for, for ten years people been waiting on, even longer, I'm not.
About thirty something years.
Longer, longer, so it's about time. And then we finally see people working, and it's like, yeah, it's finally getting done, and it fell off the, the fire, I mean, I don't know what happened. I know you have a good excuse, uh, another thing, there's talking about, um, the water treatment plant. Are we on reverse osmosis right now?
No, sir.
We're not, are we going to be on it?
Let's let, Mr. Canada, you go ahead and state all your comments so we don't waste your three minutes, and then we will answer.
Okay, yes, uh, so it's not working, and they're talking about the, uh, the colored water, I'm having the same problem. And if I don't have a filter on one of my, uh, refrigerators, uh, the water is colored. And it does put nasty stains on the ice, man, I'm not gonna eat it, I don't, I only wanna feed it to my dog, and that's what we usually do because it's so hot. And, uh, uh, the, the flushing, if we have to continue to flush, uh, and it's still not doing any good, then, uh, what is next? I mean, I think you gotta clear up, we'll clean up the water from the water treatment plant first, and then after that, then you can flush. But if the water's colored coming from the water treatment plant, then it's gonna keep building up and building up, it's gonna keep having the same problem, you know? And, and if you really wanna clean those pipes, I mean, some people, of course, use chemicals, but, uh, even a pig sometimes, you know, that's, that, you know, that, I don't know if iron and magnesium or what it is, fine, uh, but it can be cleaned up, and, uh, I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Canada. And, Mr. Canada, are you on social media at all?
Me? Myself? No.
Okay, well, before you leave, I'm, we're gonna print you something, and we're also working on how to get it out to the meet, um, residents besides social media. You can actually can go on our, um, website, and there are updates. Sam, is that updated on the website, that information?
Just the social media.
Okay, it's just on the social media, but we're working on how to get it up there. But before you leave tonight, we'll get you something printed out to answer all your questions on the Martin Bluff Road project and the water clarification.
That'd be great.
Um, we did, we've been doing updates on all of our projects, um, so you, people can follow us there. Um, we understand, we drive Martin Bluff Road, some of us more than others. Um, and we don't, we want it finished just as bad as y'all want it finished. Um, there is no excuses, but unfortunately, when you get into some people that have disagreements or somebody thinks one way and another party thinks another way, you have to then, you know, hire another mediator to get involved, to mediate which one's right or make the deal work so they can get it back out there. I have faith, our city manager had a meeting last week with all parties and with the bond company, and they, I think, are coming to close to being able to be back on the job and working in the coming, hopefully, weeks. So just be, all I can say is we all need a lot of praying for that project, that it gets done.
I guess we have.
Um, but I can tell you it's nothing that the city staff has done or nothing that this city council has done to hinder the project. Um, so I ask that you do that, but we will get you that sort of printed out, um, so I can hand it to you.
Okay, and I just one little thing, five seconds. You know, Rusty, you know, I talked to you, you know, and, you know, just, just give us what we need, and then, you know, live your life and everything, and it's good.
Um, next, Mr. Billy Booth.
Good evening.
Evening.
Billy Booth, one four resident, um, real brief, I just, um, asking if Councilman Anderson will give us an update on giving, um, your Facebook files to Mr. Richard Jackson, the N W A C P Vice President. Um, he, um, by his own accord said he could do that July the eighteenth, and here it is over almost two months, and, um, that meeting has not occurred. So we just asking that you will, um, follow through with that. Um, there was a statement saying that just a few people are concerned about this, and one issue is the fact that only so many people can talk. Um, so if anybody in this building wants this to be resolved, uh, I would like if you will stand up just to show that, uh, we, 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 we would like for Mr. Councilman Anderson to, um, to, to resolve this matter. If anybody want to stand up about this.
Okay, I'll stand up too. I, I want it resolved as well.
Was that all you had to speak? Next is Matthew Cardlet. Matthew, any Matthew here that wanted to speak. Claude Stubbs.
Here Claude Stubbs, twenty-five oh one Bayou Avenue Road, Goche. I stand here again, I just talked today with Mr. Rowley, I'm concerned with the water. Uh, and I guess I can go into a couple of things that other people have mentioned about the water as well. And then I came in, we were discussing the new water bill hikes and things like that, and I know that you guys have done several things to try to keep the water bill at a minimum. But I have an issue, because my water bill keeps going up automatically. I have a pool, and all my problems started when I went to have this pool redone. When we bought the house, the pool was in shambles. It took a few years, because I was traveling. The wife wasn't gonna take care of it, so once I came home for good, I had the pool redone. New liner, new pump, new piping, the whole nine yards. I went up before we even got the pool installed, and told them I did about forty thousand gallons of water. Next month, I got a bill for forty thousand gallons of water that I didn't use. Later on, when I did fill the pool, we determined today that it was thirty-two thousand gallons. So we curtailed that problem with the forty thousand gallons of water. We got that taken care of. Then the pool, I guess, a few months ago, I got a bill for some rental properties I had. Some bills that they said I hadn't paid for ten years. I paid that. Then a few months later, I get another three hundred and some dollar water bill. We're not using that much water, it's only my wife and I. I have a pool, I also have a pump that pumps water to the pool. It's not from the city water. I don't tie the water pump to the house. I still use city water, but I don't use the water from the pump to do anything else to fill that pool. I do not see myself paying three hundred bucks every four or five months for water that I'm not using. It says it's not their problem, the meters and stuff supposedly, it's being red, but I don't see that happening all the time. But, you know, if I have to go out there and check my water meters, every morning, at a certain time, I'll do that, but I'm not gonna continue paying this. And then I have to pay for bad water. That doesn't help my case at all either, because you gotta flush your damn toilet to keep it clean. You know, you wash your clothes, you wear your washing, you know? I done bought three washing machines in the past five years, because the water's eating the washer off. They're not cheap washers. They're serious, they're being tank, and cleaning this thing, so. And, you know, one other thing is when you cut your debris and you put it on the side of the road, how long does it take for it to come?
They should come the same week. If they don't call Public Works, and they will put in a work order and get with Waste Pro, and they monitor that.
Okay, thank you.
They're supposed to come the same day or the next day after.
I might say either for two, two weeks.
Did you call Public Works, Mr. Stubbs? Is it still there?
Anything I should have to call Public Works?
Is it still there?
I put it out there on, no, it's gone. I put it out there on Saturday before they, when they want on Monday. So I figured that they would come sometimes between Monday and Friday, and two weeks later, it shows it's still there. They finally picked it up. My neighbor just put something out this past weekend. I'm gonna see how long that stays there.
Well, if it's not picked up, because it, there is fines built into that contract. So, but if the residents don't call Public Works and notify them, they're not riding the road and won't know it's there, and the service provider's not gonna tell them.
This is not taken care by the people, the guys that come by with garbage trucks to pick up the garbage? They don't report this?
What I'm telling you, Mr. Stubbs, is they're to pick it up, but if they don't pick it up, within a certain timeframe, there's fines built in their contract. No, they're not gonna call and tell on themselves. They don't want us to send them a fine. So the resident has to call and report it to Public Works, so we can then turn in the work order and track them not picking up limb debris on the time that's required by the contract.
Mr. Stubbs, if you'll call me, I'll get it picked up for you, guaranteed.
Okay, Mr.... I don't, I mean, it is literally in their normal-fashioned signature and not printed out. So, uh, it starts with maybe a J, and the last name maybe Murray, maybe M.
June Murray.
I'm sorry.
June Murray.
Okay, if you'll come to the front and state your first, and I apologize for not being able to read everybody's signature. It clearly says.
I was in a hurry, I'm sorry.
It's fine. Thank you for taking it up for me.
My name is June Murray, I'm in the twenty, I have a heritage drive. I have, I did have three, Krista, but, uh, they, they talked about the water thing. Serena's system talking about that. Uh, I have a vacant lot across from where I live. Uh, the city usually come out and cut that grass down over there, so the section thing would come through. And then in the back of me, I have, uh, all of the, the utility things back there in the back. It was a, a deep ditch back there, but now it's all left and all the water come over my side. All that, that's on the other, uh, properties comes all my, because I'm on the end, right down the end. I talked to, uh, Mr. Anderson about it, and he, he sent them out, and they smoked it a little bit. It helped, but it didn't do too much. So, it's back at it. I know he had a drought, but it, it's coming, this rain is coming. And I'm gonna get it all in my backyard, not a one thing. So, if y'all can handle that.
Yes, Ms. Murray, we're gonna get, Ms. Morgan is gonna get with Ms. Shantsey. We'll get with Ms. Morgan. Ms. Morgan will get with Clearwater, and we'll make sure we get it resolved for you, so it'll all be taken care of, and we'll apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We thank all of y'all for coming and, um, speaking and sharing your citizen concerns, and we will work with you to get them rectified, and, um, the Clearwater is projects. We have updates that we've shared on that, um, once again on social media. We'll be glad to put those, um, work towards getting those on the website if you don't have social media, so they're available, because it really talks about the two water treatment plants that we've gotten federal funding for, the status of them, where they are from where the project started to where we are today. It was a very informative informational piece that will answer a lot of concerns that you all have addressed and stood up here and asked about tonight. So it's just, it shows that we need to get it on there so y'all can see it there also. Um, does everybody have access to internet and website? If you don't, raise your hand. Okay, so if we get it there, then we'll be reaching a lot more people, obviously, than just our social media. But once again, we thank you all, and please, if you have any water clarification issues, I know you say you've already called Public Works, but they have to track and monitor it. So if you, if it clears up one time and it starts again, call them back. There's no number of times set that you can call there. They're there to answer the phone, that's what our taxpayer dollars pay for, so let's call and let them know so we can try to get the problems resolved. If you have any limb debris pickup, any garbage issues with service with them, please call Public Works, the Goche number, the Goche Public Works. They will deal with the service provider. Do not call the service provider directly. Any elected officials, we go through our city manager, and she deals with the director and the service providers to get it resolved. That's how our form of government works, and we all follow that form of government. So we appreciate all of you. Councilman George.
I have no comments.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes, um, first I want to just thank everybody for coming and, um, sharing your, uh, your opinion, plus, you know, um, speaking up for what's right and, um, addressing your issues so we can address whatever issue it is that you have. Um, I have a few things, um, because I had, um, I got some people hit me up too that's watching me from the internet, and, um, one is the, uh, the project, um, dealing with the, the water, water bill, the utility bill? I guess he's referring to the, um, the, um, the, um, water towers, the new filtration system, et cetera, the update on that? Is there any update you can, uh, respond on that?
Yeah, I just realized what the mayor was talking about.
I just said that.
Okay, okay.
That's me, Jackson.
Okay.
If they're watching on Facebook Live, we just, um, announced that you can, if you have Facebook, obviously, are they, they have Facebook?
This, this Mr. Anthony Snow.
He's got Facebook. You are more than welcome to look at our social media platforms. We've done project updates on them.
And there's been several comments that I've put on Nextdoor app, and I know he's on Nextdoor app.
Yeah, but he said utility bill, so I'm...
There's nothing regarding a utility bill.
No, I think he might be talking about a budget workshop, so.
Oh, then it probably was with the budget workshop, yeah. Um, let's see, hold on, I, 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 the, um, is there any, like, update? Because she had, uh, Ms. Riley asked about the mall property. Um, it, you can, like, say for instance, uh, you know, I know you met with business people, just explaining to her to understand that, uh, the, um, you know, some kind of update to let them know that, reassuring that the mall's property is coming, things are coming to the wall mall property. Uh, any update on that, or anything you can say right now? I know you can't exactly say exactly what it is, but if it, whatever you can say and address it to it.
Council has adopted a master plan, so when you go out this door, it's on a postboard out there on an easel. It will show you kind of uses or the way they envision it to be. Um, we are still attempting to resolve the issue that we have with Belk. We're not trying to take Belk's property. What we're trying to do is get our property where Belk will tell us what we can and can't have on it. That's different. Um, and so far as the actual mall property, I can tell you that as a result, largely since the amphitheater has gotten closer and closer to being complete, I've seen an increased interest, uh, not just in the mall property, but overall also out on Highway Fifty-seven. Um, there are new businesses opening. Just because they don't open on the mall property doesn't mean that we don't have things to do here. And we had a big ribbon cutting, um, what was it, Mayor, a couple weeks ago?
Week before last.
Um, and, and for a new restaurant that opened in the old Rosie's place. Um, so I would encourage everybody, I know everybody's kind of focused on the mall property, but all the businesses that we have are important, and the more you support them, I know this is gonna sound strange, but the more people support what is happening in this city, even though it's not on the mall property, the more you increase the chances of some developer being interested or some business being interested in low pay on the mall property, because they track where you spend your money, so the more you spend it in Goche, you're helping economic development.
Okay, and, um, the, I guess the last...
And the answers. Go ahead, Mr. Jack, Councilman Jackson.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna finish up. Um, this is, um, like, Mr. Stubbs is, um, he's been addressing this water bill for quite some time. So, um, I would like to see, I guess, this, getting this, um, resolved. Um, is there some kind of way we can get that? Because he's been addressing it, it's not just one time, he's came to several meetings, and we want to try to get a handle to it.
We've got some history on that, which I will, the conclusion of this may be not the same.
Yes, ma'am.
Be assessed.
All right, and that's pretty much all the comments I had.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gallo.
Uh, I just want to say, if there's anybody in the room or in the city that they want to call me, I'll certainly help you with your problem. I'll concentrate on Ward Three, but I will answer any phone call from any citizen in here. Now, if you call my phone number, you're gonna wind up leaving a message, but I guarantee you I'll call you back. That's it.
I didn't mean that, actually.
Councilman.
You can call the two.
Councilman Collins.
Uh, during our announcements, don't forget this is our last farmer's market for the year. This will come on Saturday, so please, uh, please try to visit it and support our, our local staff and our local businesses that come and sell there. Under that, I'm good.
Thank you. Councilman College, Councilman Anderson.
Oh, yes, I, I would like to thank the city staff for all their hard work and everything that they do. I'd also like to thank them for their respect and dignity, dignity for the last four months during the alleged charges on myself. I appreciate the way you've all treated me. Um, Mr. Canada, I'm gonna give you a call. Mr. Booth, I'm gonna contact you also. Uh, talking about our water, our brown water, and people having, we having to flush the systems, and, uh, people being told to flush their hot water tanks. and people being told to flush their hot water tanks, which I've had to do twice in the last year and a half myself. Okay, we're going up on the water bill, over $10 a month on people. And we're going up also about a little over $10,000 gallons. So say somebody uses 2,999 gallons. And we tell them, you gotta flush your hot water heater tank to get it cleaned out and to make it have clear water again. Because it'll hold in there for a long time. Just running your hot water here and there, it's a long time getting that color out of the hot water heater tank. So they flush your hot water heater tank and it takes at least a hundred or so gallons. And that's gonna put them over the 2,999, which is less than the minimum, which keeps their bill with them out. So they're gonna go over that by say 100 gallons. And they're gonna get charged $10 plus for that 100 gallons. And they paying actually for a thousand gallons. And I discussed this in our budget meeting. Did we come back with anything that we could break this down to 100 gallons over the 3,000?
No, sir.
There's no way to do that?
No, sir.
Well, these people is gonna be flushing their hot water heater tanks. He's gonna be paying 10 plus dollars a month. And they go over the minimum. That's gonna be another $10. That's $21 over just because they had to flush their hot water heater and they would have stayed under the minimum. So it's gonna cost them $21 more a month if they had to flush their hot water heater under those circumstances. I don't think it's fair. I really don't.
Hopefully, when we get this air filtration plant up and running, that'll eliminate these problems.
When, we've had the money for three years and Corps of Engineers is sitting on their duffs over there in Alabama and have no intentions, it look like, to start in our.
I was just posting an update and I just said this to you today. I'm off. So.
Yeah, I mean.
And I trust you and I believe you, but I don't trust the Corps of Engineers to hold to it.
The Corps of Engineers is building a prefab metal building. These skids, which are the thing that treats the water.
Okay, please, the city manager and the council's talking. Let's everybody be quiet because the recordings can't record when there's background noise.
Skids that treat the water are currently being constructed. I have pictures that I have sent to our communication specialist of them actually being built. We are paying for those skids. That is not part of the Corps of Engineers project.
I understand.
I asked for an update from the Corps on the where they were with this. Because under 219, which is the federal statute we got the grant under, it's called 219. Word of 219. Under that particular, when you get money under that particular bucket, the Corps actually constructs the building. We don't. We're just the beneficiary of it. And once they build it, they give it to us. I asked for an update. It's been through more reviews than I can even count. And according to the update I got from the project manager at the Corps, they are planning on bidding the prefab metal building in February of 2024. So once it's bid and awarded, you should see the building constructed.
February 2024.
And he said he was gonna bid and.
Off the top of your head, can you say from February 2024, how many years back they've been in this process of putting a metal building up? Three years?
It seems like we got awarded money in 2020. I'm doing this from memory, but.
And Councilman Anderson was provided all this also and has the update that you're trying to update everybody on, right? That it's the same information.
But I want to publish it.
I know, and it was published in on our social media and we're putting it on the website. But Ms. Shanksley can continue to try to do it from the top of her head. But unfortunately, she don't have that right in front of her. So Ms. Shanksley is trying to update again information that's already been provided. And we've done press release and media stuff. I just want everybody to understand. She's doing it off the top of her head, not prepared to have to give that update right now. So she's, don't hold her to the date specifically.
I'm not getting on, Ms. Shanksley, Mr. Mayor. I'm getting on the Corps of Engineers.
I understand, but she's only able to do so much and she's answered and we've provided the information to the citizens. Go ahead, Ms. Shanksley.
So we were awarded money in 2020. It took, the first step is you have to have a cost share agreement with the Corps. Seems like it took maybe eight, nine months for us to get that all fixed. Once we signed the cost share agreement, we have to go ahead and send them our part of the money, which is our percentage of the max. We have to transfer it to them at that moment. Then they took the design and it went through, but that was probably 2021 sometime.
September 2021 was when we did the entry of construction authorization by council.
Yep. So then after that, the project went to agency review. It stayed at agency review until, I wanna say September, October of last year. Then it went to technical review. Got out of that sometime this past year. Then it went to bidability, operability and maintainability review. It just came out of that and now it's been sent to the Corps Contracting Division. So that's kind of the short, the long version.
That's what I wanted you to say. And that takes it off of your shoulders. It takes it off the council's shoulders. It's the Corps of Engineers is the problem from the get go.
Yep, we've already did our part.
Thank you, Ms. Shanksley. Okay, Mr. Stubbs, I apologize for everything you've had to go through with these water issues. And I promised you a meeting before last. I was gonna come up and see you. And I had surgery three weeks ago and I hadn't been out doing much. But I'm back where I can go now and I would like to come up here and look at your whole situation. And I would like that history that you talked about given to Councilman Jackson. Well, Mr. Stubbs is in my ward and I'd like to see that history myself also. And try to figure out what's going on up there and if problem, it needs to be fixed. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Alden.
Yes, sir. On behalf of some residents on Lima Drive and residents that are surrounding the park, Bob Hayes City Park, I'm getting continuous complaints in reference to loud vehicles. I've seen video that even in the video, I mean, it's very dag gum loud. I had a resident that lives directly across from Lima Park, I mean, Lima, Bob Hayes Park, afraid to have her little girls go out because during the, usually in the afternoon between five and later in the evening, it's it's, I guess populated by older older kids and they're smelling the odor of marijuana. I would request on their behalf that we have some kind of concerted effort to try to fix these issues and give them a few more extra patrols during the evenings during these hours. I've sent video. It's been a while. I think it was back in August in reference to, and I can send it again in an email. But I request your assistance from your officers to help me with that problem. Again, the mayor brought it up, but the Gallo family, they've been a family involved with our government for many years. I've known Mark for many years and the whole family. And I'd like to ask everybody, pray for that family as they go through this trying times. And lastly, I'd like to thank all the employees for all the hard work they do each and every day. Because we couldn't do it without you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Alden. I want to just, once again, you know, echo what everybody says. We're very appreciative of our city staff and they go above and beyond. And yes, on the holidays, when y'all think the city government offices closed, the mayor, the council members, Public Works, Public Safety, the directors over a department that might not have people on duty, Parks and Rec, Shepherd's Take Part. We are still operating and running, so we do not all get a holiday. So for all that worked on Labor Day, thank you. Appreciate every one of you. The ones that were off, I hope you enjoyed your day off and got rested. And for all of us, we just continue, we're gonna keep continuing. And Goche with all of us is gonna continue to grow and be better. With the reference, Ms. Lilly, to new businesses in Goche, we, if you're not on social media, that's unfortunately where we have to put it. I don't know if you have a better suggestion on how to get it to you. I will be more than glad for us to do it. I don't know if you have the email. We might could consider, I could ask the city manager to get with the Parks and Rec director and maybe we could start putting our new businesses in the Senior Center newsletter. And the Senior Center, that also goes out by email. So maybe if you have the email, you would be able to see it. But just a few that off the top of my head and scanning real fast through my phone over here, that's what I was over here doing, trying to write some down. We've had Southern Comforts buffet that opened down here on the highway. Everybody's been wanting a buffet. And they have a full loaded buffet with salad on. So nobody can say they have to drive over to Ruby Tuesday's to get a buffet or to somewhere else, the casino in Harrison County. You can go right here and Goche, Mississippi and get a buffet. Also, it's on Highway 90 at the Old Rosie's, the old Mexican restaurant. And we're blessed that when a business closed due to not being able to find employees to work, we were best blessed with a local citizen, our sister cities, that's who's opening restaurants in their communities mainly, is local citizens who live in their community. So we were blessed and this business owner and a former city employee opened, turned around and opened that into a country style buffet.
Mentioned Popos.
Um, Councilman Anderson, I got it.
I'm gonna make sure.
Okay. So, Ms. Lilly, anybody have a question where that's located? I'll be glad to answer it now. Okay, well, it's on Highway 90. If you're headed back to the east of Pascagoula, you're gonna pass the Dodges Chicken Store on the left. And it's right there in the shopping center to the left, right before Pilger Hyundai and before the hotel there. It's in between the hotel and the Dodge store.
That's not, it stays open?
It's open. Their hours are like Tuesday through Sunday. Tuesday through, Sunday is lunch. And on Friday and Saturday, they're open at night. And then on Sunday, you know, just for after. You're welcome. We also have Popos Country Kitchen. How many of y'all know about Popos Country Kitchen? This is just helping me figure out how people know about our local businesses. Popos Country Kitchen, have you ever heard of it? Never. What? Popos Country Kitchen is located on the Sioux Bayou in Indian Point Resort RV Park. You don't have to be a camper to go in there. You just follow Indian, you rode, Indian Point Road all the way to the end and it'll guide you. When you stop, you're gonna look to your right. There's a little clubhouse like building and there it sits. They have a great buffet on the weekends for breakfast. And then they have a menu during the week for breakfast and lunch. They're not open for dinner. But I would encourage you, great homemade food. It is not, nothing there served processed to my knowledge that I've had. Also, how many knows about Chloe's Cakes and Treats? Has anybody ever been there? Okay, Chloe's Cakes and Treats is a new little bakery. It's in Baywood Commons, right here on Goche Van Cleve Road, where Wonder Nails is, Delo's Coffee, Baywood Travel, Red Door Salon, many businesses in there. They have the best homemade chicken salad. It's great. They have pickled deviled eggs. They have cupcakes. They have cookies. They have fried fish platters they sell on the weekends. They have trash pot. How many knows what trash pot is? If nobody don't know what trash pot is, you don't know what you missed. Okay, so go to Chloe's Cakes and Treats. Founding Fathers Bakery. Anybody know where that is? Founding Fathers is down here located on Highway 90. You pass the Family Dollar General Store. You'll pass a longtime air masters, heating and cooling and plumbing. That's been here for many, many, many years, decades, before I was born. And then to the right, there's a little strip mall and it was the Mitchell Building. They're in there. Yep, that's right. Second from the end. They have also pastries, gourmet pastries. You don't have to go to Biloxi. You don't have to anywhere. Just go right there, the Founding Fathers. They have sandwiches. If you like tomato cheese with bacon, they have all kinds of stuff. Quiche, biscuit and gravy, cakes, homemade cakes. Order them for your birthday parties, right there. Great prices too.
I don't get that. Do the Mar- Marlboro cake too.
They do. King Cake salsa. We had the Social Pilates and Art Place just opened on the highway. You know, if you're into art and Pilates, you might not have known, but they're up here on Highway 90, just.
So Pilates or Pilates?
Was it? I thought it was Pilates, but maybe it's Pilates.
Maybe it, anyway, they have, they have a bunch of activities. People's already been painting and doing there. They got activities for children, adults, senior citizens. They're accommodating to everybody. We're blessed to have them. The Salty Dog Pet grooming, pet washing. How many have pets? You don't have to wash them at home. You can or take them to, you don't have to go to Tractor Supply anymore. You go right here to Highway 90 by Founding Fathers. They have it. You walk in there, you wash your dog, got shampoo, smells great. Wonderful place. You don't have to go out of town for that service anymore. We have a lot going on here in Goche and we just have to engage everybody. I mean, heck, I don't know if y'all have heard, but you don't have to go to New York, the Carnegie Deli. We got Cheesecake Factory, Cheesecake Heaven, right here in Goche, Mississippi. Opink's Cheesecake is in Baywood Commons Shopping Center. I mean, not Baywood. It's up here, the Country Gentlemen. If you've not been there, their hours are different. You can go. She is a businesswoman who has partnered and ventured to many other areas. She goes to Target sometimes. Killer Crabs, she's partnered with Killer Crabs. Her stuff is there. Burnham's in Moss Point, Mississippi. They get a little bit of Goche, Mississippi. In Moss Point, because she's in Goche, Mississippi, and they go over there and selling it out of Burnham's. That was the need. So support our local businesses. We have Cornerstone. How many knows about Cornerstone on the highway? They did a great job revitalizing that building, the owners of the building. Phenomenal. New York Pizza, Burrito Zone, Aztecas. How many knows the golf course has food? They have food down here at Shell Landing. You can order off the menu. They have different items. But and you can also go to Hickory Hills, River Oaks. They have a nice menu. Great food up there. You don't have to be a member of either facility to go eat at their restaurants. If you thought you did, you do not. So let's clarify. They are open to the public. I encourage you to go support them. The Bowling Alley, how many people would thought? You get nice food there and a nice meal. We got Highway 57, El Patron, Happy Noodle, Sideline's Bar Grill and Restaurant up there. They have seafood steaks. You name it, right up there. You just, it's not, we got places. You just gotta support them. Because when we, like Ms. Shanksley said, these businesses, we have to support them because they're looking at our credit card sales to see where we're spending our money. So make sure you spend your money and support our local businesses. We have the businesses. We're continuing to grow. We're growing Goche together. So let's support them. And if you, we're gonna figure out a way to get those new business information to you besides obviously ribbon cuttings and our, because we do a big write-up on them and put them on social media. But we're gonna do a way, come up and brainstorm a way to get it out there to y'all. Because for you all to not know about that many businesses in a short amount of time, we need to get it so you can support them because they need all. um, we need to get it so you can support them, because they need all your support. And to the businesses that I might have not mentioned, it's only because I mentioned newer ones that were sooner, but we're grateful for all of our local businesses and national businesses here, cause we're blessed to have FELG. They do generate a lot of tax revenue and loans, we're blessed to have large bucks retail in Gochae, Mississippi, a lot of cities don't have that. Also, don't forget Cruising Through the Decades, our Cruising the Coast event will be Sunday, October the first. Um, stay tuned, follow us on Facebook, social media, website, everything for that. And also the Gochae Mullet Festival will be October 21st, 2023, and right now they're looking for artists. If you know an artist to, um, do art, to put in for that, they got three categories you can win. So I encourage you to encourage artists to participate in that. Also, um, we have the Jackson County Blues Festival this weekend, um, it's at the Fairgrounds. I encourage you to go over and support the heritage, um, this weekend over there at that, um, festival. Also, we have the Singing River Masonic Lodge is located by City Park, um, across from St. Mary's Church, and this Saturday, September the ninth, they're gonna have smoked chicken plates for twelve dollars per plate. They also do a lot of giving back to the community, scholarships, helping people in need, um, and that type of thing. So if you feel the need, that'd be from 11:00 to 2:00 PM this coming Saturday, um, and Mr. Scott Mitchell with the Singing River Masonic Lodge just texts me that, um, if I would announce it. So please support them, support our Gator Nation, um, all of their sports, cheerleading football team and all of them, and please can, um, keep in prayers, um, our quarterback who got injured, um, that he has a fast recovery, Mr. Irving, and also, um, I would like to recognize our school member, um, school board member, Mr. Cleon Irving, his mother, who is retired teacher and educator in our system, Ms. Irving back here, we thank you for coming tonight also, and that is her grandson, so we appreciate, um, you for all you did as we were growing up in our community, Minnesota. That brings us to our city manager comments. City clerk comments. City attorney comments. I hope you all have a blessed week, and if you need anything, we all are elected by you to represent you, call us, our phone numbers are on the website, our email addresses are on the website, and our addresses. So if you need us, call us. We are adjourned, do we have a motion to recess until September the 12th, 2023?
So move.
At 6:00 PM. Remember, 6:00 PM, Councilman Jackson made the motion, do we have, uh, Councilman George?
He made the second. Uh, George made the second.
Jackson and George made the second, all in discussion, all in favor, motion carries.